I lost something here.
I found some more files up in the top of the thing if there is about Randy's.
Oh.
I just saw, just had the designation thing. I didn't actually read the files yet. So I gotta do that tomorrow to see if there's anything relevant to that fire report.
It's just that one parcel.
But the thing is, a lot of that stuff doesn't break down. That's just limited to that parcel, except for when they were talking about when they, when they tore down the original house.
Is that how it's spelled his name?
I can't see anything.
S T E E L E?
Yes.
Jeff Steele?
S T E E L E, yes. We got Joe showing up, Anthony, Steve, Ed, Jeff and Kyle. Mark's online. Trick or treat?
No, I haven't anything to eat.
After quarantine, it's fourteen days.
I'll be down there in a minute.
And this. The only titties that not shut up are. Anybody want to move on to the other?
Can you see it?
Hmm? Okay, I've got everyone but Merkel and Zimba accounted for.
Yep. Someone just dropped in.
Tom.
Now, right?
Yep.
Oh, is that door unlocked?
Yes.
Is, 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 oh, come over here.
Jerry.
Yep.
Joe, you're in. We forgot to unlock the door.
He's leaving to return again later.
Oh, bud. We did not, there was no discussion relative to construction that either Stefan or I could recall. I haven't reviewed.
It was a take, but I can't. Some work on that island landscaping. It was all, we were under the impression. We, I called them and they gave me a name and a number of manager to call. I gave that to Schuster and neither of us have heard a thing from him since.
Well, I tried calling the number that's on that letter that you folks received and it says that the voicemail is full and I can't accept any. So I made a copy and I was gonna send an email tonight, except all of our phone lines have been cut.
Got me cut?
Well, we have nothing. I mean, there's no even dial tone. I mean, it's like a totally dead phone. We've lost our business line, our, our home phone, our fax number. So I have no internet. So that's why this, I was gonna quick print out. So, but yeah, if you go out there, they built in the, in the front yard in front of the building, well, it's in the walkway. They've got like six guys coming up. Wire mesh, so there's a staff work order on it.
Oh.
Okay. Seven twenty-nine. Next meeting is at the sixteenth?
Yep. Okay, one and all, it is seven thirty, Monday, November second, two thousand and twenty. I've determined once again that an end meeting, in-person meeting is not practical or prudent under the current pandemic and coronavirus nineteen lockdown. So once again, we are going by the abridged Open Meeting Act rules in which we can attend by remote. This evening on the second remote, we have Steve DiAtly, Anthony Perino, Ed Harney, Joe Nimmick. Also in attendance is Village Attorney Mark Schuster, Village Chief of Police Mike Bravis, and Village Engineer Jeff Steele, along with Village Public Works Director Kyle Killinger. In the building itself is myself, the clerk Anthony, or Anthony Mills, our A T guide, John Florence behind the screen, and joining us this evening for the P and Z report will be Barb Detmer of I C C I. Okay, it being seven thirty. I take everybody can hear me. I've not had any objections.
Nope, everybody's good.
Everybody's good. Okay, then we'll call this meeting to order and we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
Good.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, this nation, under God, in this bold, liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call please. Mr. Perino.
Present.
Mr. DiAtly.
Present.
Joe?
He was.
Emmett?
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Well, I wish that you're here. Uh, Mr. Harney.
Yeah. I'm watching. Yeah, here, but I lost the signal too there for a minute.
Yeah, we're having some audio or signal problems there. I, I, I lost you for like thirty seconds. I couldn't hear anything.
Mr. Merkel? Mr. Zimba? You have a call on Mr. President?
We have four out of six attending remotely. Myself is five. Absent is Mr. Zimba and Mr. Merkel.
Okay. Am I the only one having Stephen and Tony cutting in and out? Is it my problem or is it on their end?
It only happened once earlier when they were calling the roll. I hear them good now.
Okay.
Yeah, I've, I've been able to hear okay all throughout.
Okay.
Okay. If we run into trouble, holler quickly.
I'll text you. Who should I text? Is that, we don't have the?
Be Tony. Thanks.
Tony, okay.
Wave your hand.
Wave your hand.
We can see you fine.
Moving on, we've got the roll call, the minutes. We need approval of the minutes of October nineteen, two thousand and twenty.
So move DiAtly. Second, Harney.
Moved by DiAtly, seconded by Harney. Are there any corrections to the minutes of October nineteen, two thousand and twenty? I hear no corrections to the minutes of October nineteenth. I ask for a roll call, please. Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Mr. DiAtly.
Aye.
Mr. Nimmick. Mr. Harney.
Aye.
We've got four affirmative votes, no negative votes. The motion so passes. Okay, next item is the president's report. The update on the Coronavirus Relief Act, the CARES Act. Matter of fact, I just got an email a little after six this evening asking for some more supporting documents to be submitted to them by the end of the week. So tomorrow morning, that's my first item of business. To work on that list of supporting documents that they want in return to them. Last week, we did sign and return to them the I G A that they had approved and sent to us the week of October thirteen, fourteenth. So that is slowly but surely working its way through its process. The next item is Rage and Eight, the Resurgent Mitigation. If you all have been in a cave, you might have missed the news. Covid nineteen seems to be making a resurgence and we are in what is called Region Eight along with one other county, I believe it's McKinry.
All right.
DuPage. DuPage and Kane are Region Eight. We have been put on a warning. We are right now at tier one. We will remain on tier one until at least Friday this week. If the numbers do not drop by Friday, we may go to tier two. So stay tuned to your local news source and follow that situation and we'll see where we end up. Okay, the next item, boundary agreement with the city of Elgin. If you recall, some time ago, I informed the board that developer had approached us about a possible development just off of the tollway at the end of Tollgate Road in basically unincorporated township property. That fall, that piece of property actually fell inside of the Sleepy Hollow side of the jurisdictional agreement that we have with the city of Elgin. And as such, the developers have come to the Sleepy Hollow and asked if we would be opposed to them moving that project into the jurisdictional area of Elgin. Uh, since we actually have no land that is contiguous with that piece of property, it'd be almost next to impossible for us to annex it, but since the property was inside our agreement boundary area, we can have negotiations with Elgin. If there's something that we may desire from Elgin, this is the time to do it. Historically, we did the boundary agreement was renewed in two thousand and five. At that time in renewing it, we asked for sales tax sharing with any of the retail growth that may occur west of Randall Road. We, that development went ahead and came online. We've shared with Elgin the sales tax revenue for the better part of ten years that expired last year on the, the last section. So those are the kinds of things that we've incorporated into these boundary agreements. And it is one of the ideas that we could do with this new one that has come before us. So that's basically where we stand at the moment. We have included in the packets the copy of the two thousand and five boundary agreement between Elgin and the village of Sleepy Hollow for your consideration. As I said, right now, the thing I'm looking at is possibly asking Elgin for some tax sharing of that property, since what we understand is that it's going to be more of a warehouse facility and not a retail. It would be property tax is what we'd be looking at, a share from Elgin for on this. Anybody have any comments or questions or concerns about this agreement?
I have a question. Perino here.
Sure, Anthony.
So in looking at the map and they reference parcel three. And it looks like it's a parcel that's visible from Interstate ninety. But in relation to Sleepy Hollow Road, in relation to the corner of Sleepy Hollow Road and Bonkowski, is this parcel near, near the horse farm that's over there?
Well, how close, what do you call near?
Well, if I, if I'm driving.
Here. Parcel three, Mr. Perino, is probably part of that horse farm. If you were to drive all the way to the end of Point Boulevard where it ends right now, it's the next parcel to the east. It, nothing has happened with parcel three in fifteen years since two thousand and five. So there was some talk then, but nothing has materialized. The parcel we're talking about now is elsewhere, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's a different.
It's east of the parcel three. If you follow the black line along I ninety, you'll see it makes a ninety degree turn to the north. And that's the end of Tollgate Road. That's where we're talking.
Frankly, it's, it's gonna be right north of the toll booth. That's where the parcel we're talking about tonight is located, north side of the tollway, right at the toll booth.
Okay, I.
So parcel three is still in the agreement, but nothing's happened for fifteen years. And I, I think there was some talk at the time and, and the, the owner there of that horse farm just never split his property up and sold any of it for development.
I, I understand. And looking at the map, I thought this agreement was referencing parcel three. But I can see now where, where that ninety degree turn is and it's over there. Okay. As far as making an agreement, certainly if it's a warehouse situation, there would be property taxes. I certainly would want us to, to get something from it. Is there a possibility because it is in the jurisdictional area of Sleepy Hollow that we control it entirely?
Not within our boundaries. Not, not within our corporate boundaries. It's unincorporated.
Well, correct.
That's why I said we have no contact with it physically.
I mean, the, the answer to your question is yes, but the practical solution, there is no practical solution because you don't have sewer or water to provide to this four hundred thousand square foot building that may be built. So without that, there's, there's no practical way for Sleepy Hollow to, to insist on retaining the jurisdiction and seeing the development. It won't happen.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Well, as I said, this is just a heads up at the moment. We do understand the developers talking to Elgin. We've not heard from Elgin yet. But this is what our proposal would be should we get a response, is that we'd like to sit down and talk about revising this boundary agreement and including some share of property tax with this development should it go forward.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm pretty sure they're waiting for Sleepy Hollow to give some response to whether the village is open to modifying the boundary line agreement. So the next step is for the village to say yes, if, if they are so inclined and from what I'm hearing, there's a consensus to make it an offer of modification along the sands as the prior agreement, that is fifty percent of the real estate tax impact for ten years. Is that, we should talk about that and see if there's a consensus to make that move.
Well, and do we know what kind of warehouse it is? Is there possible there could be any sales tax now or in the future to put upon internet sales or otherwise?
It's a truck. I, I doubt it, but it's a trucking transport hub. So I think it's just a transfer, you know, bring it in, ship it out. A carrier type situation. It's not a company that's making sales of any kind for itself. We can certainly ask the question, but you know, I, I don't think that it's a sales facility. It's a transportation hub.
The overall consensus is, uh, this is what we would like to see in exchange of them allowing this development to go forward.
I would be good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'd be good with that, as addressed under paragraph seven of the agreement.
Okay, yeah, as long as we get, yeah, some type of tax revenue. I just had another, just another. I just had another quick, I just had another quick question.
Go ahead, Anthony.
On, on the, just going back on the two thousand and five agreement, I noticed here that it says the Randy's Farm property may be annexed at the city of Elgin. In the future, we're out objection from the village of Sleepy Hollow. So in the event that something happens to the Randy's property, it automatically goes back, that property automatically goes back to the city of Elgin, per this agreement?
Yeah, yes.
No, I don't believe it automatically goes back. It would, if Randy's Market were to petition the village of Sleepy Hollow for disconnection, we would not oppose it.
Right.
That's basically.
Yeah, I mean, it goes, goes back isn't the right word because it was never part of Elgin before, but if, if they elect to transfer to Elgin, the village of Sleepy Hollow has said, has agreed that it would not object. And they would do that to get water and sewer service to that property for a redevelopment, I assume. But they haven't done that to date yet either.
Right, so, so basically because we're somewhat landlocked with water and sewer, this is where some of these agreements that were put in place made sense and continue to make sense. Would that be a true, true summary statement?
Mister President, I think so.
I think so. No water, no sewer. You're hard up to, to provide any services to the body outside of streets.
Well, and you're getting water from Elgin. So, you know, as part of all of that consideration, this, this is sort of a.
Agreed not to compete with the sale sales.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for the president's report, the clerk's report. For those of you that are big fans of searching the municipal code on their website, Sterling is no longer the entity that is managing the codification of village ordinances. It's now the American Legal Publishing Company and they have notified us that the, the prior Sterling link is no longer active and that they have automatically carried over to their new link, which they are claiming has greater capacity, search capacity and capabilities. That's their reference, not mine. You may run into some glitches for the next couple of days as we try to work out exactly what is going to be on the village website or on the, the municipal code. They've thrown in a couple of little extra areas that we really don't want. So if there's any glitches for the the next couple of days, maybe for a week or so, just be patient. If it becomes persistent, just let me know and I'll see what I can do for you. The, the second item is that C M Parker got a hold of me to let me know that they are going to try and get the newsletter, the draft of the newsletter available for you folks by the sixteenth, which is the next regular business meeting. So if anybody has any items that they want to go into the newsletter, you need to get that to C M Parker ASAP so that they can have time to put that together for the next business meeting, which is the understanding they are going to ask for your review and blessing on, on its content. And then one thing that was not on there, but it's a public service announcement. If you have not voted, tomorrow is the day that you can go out and vote. Your, your vote equals your voice, so use your voice wisely. And that's the end of the public service announcement from the clerk. I have nothing else, Mr. President.
I have a follow-up question for the clerk.
Go ahead, Anthony.
I, in, under new business, I have something in there where I wanted to put an update in the newsletter. So should I just send that directly to the person managing that or should we discuss the text later on?
What are we talking about, Anthony?
To, to put in a note regarding, I listened to the, to the zoning board meeting last week and it's just a reminder statement about residents, making sure that residents apply for permits for various things they are doing. And in that.
By all means, Anthony, go ahead and write up an article for insertion in the newsletter.
Very good. Then I will take care of that. I'll take this out off of the new business item. Thank you.
Kedok. Uh, that's it for the clerks. Next is planning and zoning. We've got Ms. Detmer here with us this evening to present the report for the P and Z.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chairman Fupa asked me to present on his behalf the recommendations to you as a village board from the last meeting. I believe you have that report, but I'll include it anyway. So it's in the record. The village of Sleepy Hollow Planning and Zoning Commission, P Z C, met October twenty-first, twenty twenty to consider an application for variance from the village code and a proposed new sign on Randall Road. After holding the public hearing for the one-two-nine-eight Acorn Court variance request, which included presentation by the presentate, so I can petitioners and their contractors, the P Z C discussed, developed findings of fact and voted unanimously to recommend you, the village board, to approve the variance as they requested. The application for the variance, the elevations for the proposed portico and the P Z C's findings of fact were included with the report that you folks should have and the village board, I believe, has the proposed ordinance for approval. Secondly, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously voted to recommend the village board approve the proposed replacement sign Baptist church. The plan follows the variance package noted above at the end of the report. And along with this recommendation, P Z C voted unanimously to recommend village board allowing electronic message boards with restrictions provided by state statute. This is in part because Twin Elm Baptist Church is basically getting up for, going on probably five to six years to be allowed to have a message board similar to what has been installed over a certain apartment. Their concern was they're gonna go through the cost of putting up the replacement sign that was destroyed. And they didn't know if there was some way of, of working with the the church in allowing the message board. Because technically it requires a zoning change to the sign code. But we didn't know if it could somehow be to nest similar to what happened with the fire department. So the P and Z going along, P C C going along with that also is respectfully asking for the village board to allow a review and revision of the zoning code, basically beginning with the sign. So that's the recommendations to you folks. Do any of you have questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Is a question on both parts or just that we doing them individually?
On what, Joe?
On the approval of the, the variances.
What question do you have?
Well, I was just questioning the sign for the church that in my packet, it, it doesn't really have what they're asking for. I just have a picture of the drawing of the sign. So I don't know what the variance is for or how this differs from the old signs. Cause I know they had a variance on the old sign.
Okay. Mister Nimmick, there is no variance required all per the, the current code for the sign code. The planning commission has to recommend approval of the sign to the village board and the village board simply approves or disapproves what the planning, planning and zoning commission was kind of including in that whole discussion was the concern that the board, that the church has been requesting a electronic message board. And there, because of the accident or whatever happened that destroyed their current sign, they're having to replace that sign. But if there's going to be a change to the sign code to allow additional message boards, electronic message boards, they didn't think it was, I hate to use the term fair, but it would be the planning and zoning commission was receptive to the idea of allowing them to have a message board, especially based on all the signs that are going, that have gone up across the street on, in Elgin. So.
And I did hear you mention about the fire department, but I, I defer to Mark on this. Wasn't that a different situation since they're a different government body within Sleepy Hollow and they do not have to abide to our building codes or zoning by state of. building codes or zoning by state of law, a state of law?
Well, that's that's true. They they have a right to use their property. Uh, they um uh generally should comply with uh the existing codes, but aren't limited to that.
Okay. That's all I, that's my question I had then.
Yeah. So actually going going back to your beginning, the application, actual application for the replacement sign has been brought up um or has been received. They want to replace it in the exact same location, which is technically only ten feet off of um what was Randall Road. Uh, they own to the center line of Randall Road. But um they were not looking at moving it further inboard. Uh, they were just going to use the same foundation, which they can do. Uh, they were just going to replace the the uh first pillars and the center part of the sign, because one of the brick pillars was destroyed. So they have to rebuild that.
May I ask a question? Was there any discussion of the planned future widening of Randall Road?
No.
There there is a county plan to widen that or state, state and county plan to widen that road substantially.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure when. Just Mr. Mr. Pickett may have a more uh up to date understanding of when that might occur.
Is is the sign in the current right of way? It's gotta be really close.
I honestly can't address that because it's not shown on the plot of survey. Um, it just shows the side of Randall Road, which to my understanding has already been widened out from when they had that original plan that was done in nineteen seventy seven, I believe.
And is Mark, is that our issue or not, allowing somebody to build on the right of way?
Well, yes, it's an issue. Uh, I would think it'd be a huge issue for the county. It's a county road, so uh, you know, uh, uh, that that they own to the center line of where the road used to be. Uh, it doesn't really probably control where they can put a sign today. I I understand they'd like to probably some cost saving using the same base. Is that what I heard, Ms. Detmer, that?
Yeah.
They use the same base?
Well, there were two brick pillars um holding up the sign. So they're just going to use the one and then rebuild the other one.
Okay.
Please replace the sign base.
Yeah. I have no problem with the sign or where it is. I just want to make sure they don't spend bad, you know, throw away their money if the county is not approved with it. That's all.
That's kind of what I'm getting at. If uh if there's uh I Stefan, didn't uh, didn't you have some recent information about when that widening might take place?
Uh, there was, Mark, a year ago, we met uh with uh consultants reviewing the situation. And matter of fact, there was a uh public viewing in Elgin on it uh last fall on late, about this time, November, December.
Right.
And we just recently heard that that uh study has been completed and they are making appointments to uh introduce their findings. Now, this is just a study. It's no solutions yet. Uh, those would be, you know, identified, picked out of the various number of uh recommendations that have been presented. Uh, it's still.
The recommendations go to the the design of the interchange, don't they?
Yes, they are. They're looking at the design on the interchange.
But the roadway is uh.
The road volume.
That far away is probably no, uh, not impacted by the design, but will be uh necessary because of the uh added two lanes that they want to put on. Uh, I I remember all this stuff, just Mr. Diatley uh is indicated, just to, you know, they may get ten years out of that sign before uh there's roadwork, but uh I hope that they're alerted to the fact that there's a major study to redo the intersection at I ninety that's going to impact the roadway substantially, and as soon as it can get funded, it's going to get built. So uh they they I hope they're aware of that, that that the the money they're spending now may uh require that the whole thing be dismantled and moved again.
And unfortunately, I was not aware of that, so I'll be happy to bring it up with the sign company and the the church. But at this point, they they're without a sign and it's very nice the way they they'd like to at least be able to um move forward with.
Sure, sure.
With the replacement side of it.
Barb, that's a study published, uh, I believe, published through King County Department of Transportation. I'm not positive of that, but I'm sure they could direct you and direct the church to uh that study. It's it's been completed, so it's it's got to be available for examination. And how far north that road widening is going to go, uh, something they might want to take a look at.
Exactly. And I'm glad you all brought that up so I could share with them.
But so that's really, well, I I'm sorry, they they had asked for just permission to rebuild the sign, so that's the agenda item for tonight?
That is, that is correct. The the Planning and Zoning Commission was looking further ahead, but now understanding the situation with possible road changes of the the potential of allowing a a message board, maybe a new point at this point. We just move on with hopefully getting approval to move forward with some uh review and modifications to the existing code. But that's item number three. I kind of ran all three of them together. The first item with that would need your action is to approve the uh variance for twelve ninety eight Acorn Court, and that would be through the uh approval of the ordinance that was presented.
That's the only item that's on my agenda. Was it modified, Mr. Mills, to include two others?
No, it was not.
Okay, so, all right, so the ordinance for twelve ninety eight Acorn is an agenda item and that'd be your next order of business. The church sign, it sounds like, will be ta- uh brought back at the next meeting and whatever the third item is, it's not listed on this agenda, so.
The third item is uh request from the P C and Z to uh review sign codes within the.
Oh, okay. Well, that that's just something to take under advisement then.
We take that under advisement, new business.
Uh, just just for clarification, the the request to change the code, and I know there's a lot of things we have to change, but just right now, my opinion is, is that it's given the cost that we had last time we changed the ordinances, I'm really not for at least this fiscal year of going through any kind of ordinance revision and adding a LED sign to it or anything else.
Okay. Uh, well, let's get back up to the variance for twelve ninety eight Acorn. Any comments, questions, or concerns concerning the variance request? We have a motion, but yeah, I'm waiting for them to come up. Anybody like to uh motion, make a motion or?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the uh variance for twelve ninety eight Acorn uh as per the P and Z's recommendation.
Brano second.
Okay, Diatley moved, Brano second, had to approve the recommendation of the P C and Z to approve the variance for twelve ninety eight Acorn. Is there any further comments, questions, or discussion?
Is there an ordinance number on that? Is there, is there not an ordinance in the package?
I didn't see an ordinance.
Not yet. We're approving their recommendation.
Okay.
So.
Very well.
Okay. On the approval of the recommendation, roll call please. Mr. Diatley.
Hi.
Mr. Harding.
Hi.
Mr. Minn.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Brano. Sorry?
Hi.
There you go.
Four i's, no negative votes received, motion so passed. Okay. Uh the LED and the church lights will take up after you inform them of the road situation. And the request of the P and Z to review uh the ordinances, especially those relating to signage. What's the board's consensus on that? I know Joe's opposed to it.
I I'm in favor of it because I think we need to start taking action on some of that and not continue to push it out.
Ed, Steve?
I would be for it considering we, I know we have uh the reader boards in town now already for a couple of things, and I know that was for different situations, but uh I feel like I would be for it.
I wouldn't, I would object to it, but I I would like to make sure they know our concerns with the projects on Randall Road, but once they're informed of that, um it's kind of in their court.
Well, maybe I'm confused. Would they petition the zoning change, or are we looking at going through the, in the expense of re-updating our zoning code? So maybe I misunderstood.
We're looking at, uh, we're not talking about the church sign now. At this point, we're talking about the P C, P C and Z reviewing our sign codes.
I I have no issue with them reviewing all of our codes and making changes and otherwise, because I agree with Anthony that they're long overdue. My only concern is the, what's the actual cost if we then go to hearings and then go to change the ordinances, that they have an understanding of what it's going to cost and what our budget is on that.
Okay.
And, and that's, if I may, um, that's one thing. They'd like to look at kind of the whole zoning code, specifically starting with the sign code, but they want to keep this as cost effective as possible and hopefully be able to do um a more thorough rewrite, so to speak, so it goes through one time only. So there are multiple public hearings and that kind of thing, which if we start piecemealing it, that's when it would end up with that. So they're trying to be very cost effective on your behalf.
Okay. All right.
And then what about the missing ordinance?
The we'll pick that up uh to the next meeting. We approve their uh
So may I go?
Recommendation.
They're in, they're getting into a construction crunch. They thought they were going to have that tonight if it were approved?
We've approved their request for their variance and the recommendation from the P and Z. So all we need to do is the next meeting have the ordinance, but they're all, I would say they can go ahead and.
May I, may I issue it then? Thank you.
And if there's any problem, I'm the one to blame.
It shouldn't be a permit until the ordinance is passed. The ordinance is what makes the variance official.
Well, where are we then with tonight? We approved the recommendation to approve the ordinance.
That's right. No, you approved the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. You did not approve an ordinance. It wasn't in front of you.
I'm not sure what happened to it because I submitted it for review and and thought it was, so I'm not sure what happened.
Okay, we'll find it. Uh.
I commented on your draft and sent it back to you, Ms. Detmer.
I didn't see anything.
Maybe, maybe uh, maybe ten days ago. So I, I, I don't know what happened either, but um the ordinance should have been in the package before a vote on an ordinance and and so you really need to take that up at your next meeting and make it official.
Okay, I'll let you down. Thank you very much.
All right, fair enough. Thank you. Okay, next is attorney's report. Mr. Schuster.
Uh, I'm just reporting that I have looked at the uh proposed TMA agreement, uh had some modifications and uh sent those to TMA uh for uh their review. So that should be ready to conclude at your next meeting.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Schuster. Uh, engineers report. Jeff?
Just wanted to give you guys a couple of updates is number one is the street program for this year has been completed. Uh, you'll see under the warrants, uh, they're looking for final payment on that. Uh, there's already been the punch list items. We're going to go through it again with them just to make sure everything's all set. So if you guys see anything out on roads that they did this year, just let me know. Secondly, is uh Joe Nemec had previously brought up in regards to uh fixing the water mains throughout the village. Uh, basically the very old water mains that are in areas such as Windmore, Walnut, Hillcrest, Thoroughbred, and Locust. Um, I would recommend that the board uh sometime in the future, in order to get a more accurate cost for your future projects that you might do, is perform a study uh basically which includes uh pinpointing all of the areas where the water main should be replaced, uh where the old water main is. That way you can get a better idea, at least as far as what cost would be. Uh, kind of like the study that we did back in, I believe it was two thousand thirteen uh when we upgraded the size of all the water mains. Um, just to give you guys a quick idea, based on those locations, is the, this is a very rough cost estimate, mind you, just based off of putting the water main in the exact location, which it wouldn't be able to, but this on the low end is it could be anywhere for construction costs to be two point six to three point four million dollars. Uh, again, that's just a very rough estimate based off of previous uh construction projects that have happened in the village, but I have a feeling uh given the locations with the sanitary sewer in that area, that that cost could be uh higher, which is why the village should uh really think about doing a study uh in order to determine a more accurate cost for that and actually pinpoint the areas. Questions?
I guess then, Jeff, my question is, what's the study going to cost us?
Uh, I just wanted to kind of get your feel as far as if you'd be up for me giving you guys a proposal in regards to that. Um and if we wanted to do it for the whole village or just basically where the areas that we know are kind of like the bad areas. Obviously, we've kind of already pinpointed which areas are the bad areas, since a lot of that area is, I don't know if you know the path to Sleepy Hollow is, but from uh word of mouth is a lot of that pipe that has, that's in the lower sections is actually recycled pipe. And water main itself only has about a fifty year life cycle, so if it's already been used a lot beforehand and then reused is it's cut down a lot, especially with the soils in that area that actually reduced down the life cycle tremendously. So basically is, I can get you a proposal at the next board meeting for that.
So what do you think? I would, I would think that we would concentrate on the areas that we know are the potential first bad uh problem areas, as opposed to doing a study for the entire village at this time.
Yeah, and in that report also in the studies, I basically talked with Kyle, because obviously Kyle knows firsthand what areas are bad. And kind of just through the years is everybody kind of knows exactly where those bad areas are, so it wouldn't be very that difficult to uh actually pinpoint those areas.
Joe, what's your thoughts? You're the, you're the.
Well, I just wanted to get this ball rolling because, you know, I talked to Kyle about this quite a bit, and Kyle, you probably went on mute here, but you know, most of the significant breaks we've had have been in that area, and as I said, we're dealing with pipe that's past its service life. One of the things Jeff didn't mention, but you know, Kyle was showing, and Jeff has mentioned, it's just a wear and tear on the joints and the bolts and otherwise breaking. Um we have, Kyle, would you say we have about ten water main leaks a year in that area, the older pipes?
Yeah, I was looking through it uh earlier today. I I would say about ninety to ninety two percent of our main breaks in town are within the bad areas of Thoroughbred, Hillcrest, Locust, and Windmore.
And and we're, as I said, it's it's fifty year old, been in the ground for fifty years, and it was old when it was put in. You know, at that, we're looking at seven to ten thousand, seven to ten thousand dollars a water main break now, especially, you know, if they're under the pavement, we have to fix it. At that number a year, at thirty years, we're looking at the replacement cost just for repairs. So at some point, we just need to figure out, you know, if we ask the residents to bond it out, we get loans. Otherwise, I mean, at that kind of money, at thirty years, it's it's it certainly seems to make more economic sense. It's just a matter of how we, how we pay for it, how we go about it and through the process. I mean, it's not going to happen this fiscal year, that's for sure, but.
Right. I would agree. It's something we need to get going and, you know, get on board. So I would be for getting the study done. Uh, like you said, especially down in that area where we need to concentrate on a little more.
I mean, as I said, we're going to spend three, you know, over the next thirty years. I mean, as I said, we're going to spend, you know, over the next 30 years, we're going to spend $3 million on repairs or $3 million on replacing it. It just seems to make more sense to spend on replacing it. So.
Jeff, what's, what's the study going to run us?
I am unsure at this moment, just because is I want to get a kind of a feel for the board, at least as far as how in-depth you wanted it to be and how much of the village you wanted it to encompass. So.
We get a proposal for next month of what the costs would be and just doing the areas that Kyle recommends, the ones we know have to replace, is that?
Yeah, I can get it. Yeah, I can get it actually by the next board meeting. No problem.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And Mark for the next meeting next month, or Steve, you want to talk to us about what the process is of bonding a project like that? If we choose to go that route?
True. We will add that into, or attach a memo to Jeff's work.
Yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Steele, you've got your marching orders. Anything else for Jeff this evening?
I'm not sure. Stefan, have you mentioned in regards to the KCOM grants yet? The, so basically is KCOM has recently approved the village to actually receive funding for the Sleepy Hollow Road project. So basically, the next step is, is to create the bid documents and also the plans. Get those approved by IDOT and then we're looking at a June letting date for that, June of 2021. So next year.
When do we need those documents for IDOT, Jeff?
They have a list of basically different steps on that, but pretty much is, is you get them in about a month before, well, actually is, the whole process takes about three months, two, three months-ish. So, but obviously the plans and everything can get submitted beforehand, but as far as the bid documents that get approved by IDOT, typically they don't do them until maybe about a month beforehand, just due to them updating their codes or updating their requirements and specifications.
So this would be something we need to watch for February, March next year?
Yeah, basically as far as just preparing your funding and then you'll have your June letting date and then typically after that is, you'll know the costs that came in and then IDOT will actually approve the project then a couple of weeks afterwards and then all the, the paperwork ends up starting to go then.
Okay. Okie doke. We will keep an eye out for that then. Anything else, Jeff?
That is it.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Finance Director Finance, approval of accounts payable for November 2nd, 2020. We have a motion to approve the
Oh, go ahead and move. We approve the accounts payable for November 2nd, 2020 in the amount of 200, 205,359 and 41 cents.
Harney, second.
Okay, motion by Nemec seconded by Harney to approve the accounts payable November 2nd, 2020 in the amount of $205,359. Are there any additions, solutions, comments, or questions? No comments, questions? Roll call, please. Mr. Gattling?
Hi.
Mr. Hardy?
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Brando?
Hi.
Four affirmatives, no negatives. The motion so carries. Okay, next item is public comments. Oh, we have one comment this evening. Okay, is public comments for the November 2nd trustee meetings? From Paul Sets, I quote, "At the prior meeting, I asked the village to enforce the ordinance regarding signs in the village. I also noted that a village trustee was flagrantly violating the ordinance. In the nearly two months since I have formally filed complaints and in the two weeks since the last trustee meeting, nothing has been done. The village trustee continues to violate the ordinance and more signs are popping up across the village in violation of the ordinance. Do we now live in a village where anything goes? Do we live in a village where we have elected officials who believe that they are above the law? Everyone is entitled to believe what they wish, but they need to convey their beliefs in conformance with the sign ordinance and the village needs to enforce it." Unquote. Okay, that's it for our public comments. We go to the next item on the agenda and that's trustee reports, roads and parks. Ed?
At the last board meeting, I was asked to meet with Public Works and clarify some equipment needs and costs and that arose from questions from many of the trustees. Kyle and I met and discussed this quite at length. Much of this information will be presented in the continuing budget discussion that's going to take place here shortly. And Kyle's ready to present more specific information if needed at that time. I will take one thing off the table. We had questions about the new truck that was due in. Why don't I just ask Kyle to update us on the status of that truck? And if he would, for the sake of residents maybe tuning in, if he would tell us what the truck, what kind of truck it is and what it's used for in the village.
Okay, the status of the truck is we took delivery of the truck on Friday morning. The truck is a international plow truck slash dump truck. It's the big red trucks for residents that plow the streets and salt the streets. We use them for water main breaks. We use them for pretty much everything.
Okay, I would also add we got the cost for salt. And it's up from last year a few bucks at $97.93 a ton, which is not good news. But the good news that we do have is that we did have a surplus of road salt left over from last year. And that was a 200-ton surplus. So when it comes time to ordering salt, I wouldn't think we would need as much as we did last year.
We'll still have to, unless we sell somebody by 580-ton, I believe it is.
Yeah.
We have to buy 80% of 700-ton.
Okay.
But that's 200-ton. We don't have to buy $97.93.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Moving on, next is the finance. Mr. Zamba is not with us this evening, but we do have the five-year cap to finish up. The five-year cap at the last meeting, we, in the police, okay, administrative is the first one. We moved the replacement of a copier scanner fax machine from fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 22. And in the police department, we took the Starcom radios. Instead of paying for that in one lump sum, we're going to finance that at $37,000, $37,500 this year with some $7,000 coming for the next five or six years, I believe it is, seven years. The car tablets remained, the rifle racks remained. In parks and recreations, we had $8,500 this year for the outdoor drinking fountain. In the drainage and culvert projects, we reduced that from $75,000 to $25,000. We left in the renewal of the entry signs. The question of the salt dome was another one for village property. We had $26,000. Do we need to re-roof the dome, patch it, replace it? Kyle, what's your suggestions on that?
Well, my suggestion is to reshingle it before it's too late where you, then you'd have to re-roof it after a certain point. This has been an issue for the past seven or eight years. It's organic defaulted shingle that was put on there in the 90s. And if you look at the south side of the dome, all the shingles are gone. So I have a quote, I mean, this quote has expired as of August, but the price to do it was for $24,700. If we go with the same company, it might go up a little bit based on wages. But my recommendation is, we, it's one of those where you can't put it off anymore. We put it off for far too long and it's, it's only going to end up costing more money at the end of the day if we don't do it sometime soon. Well, do we have to do it this year? I don't know if we can pass our budget May 1st of next year. Maybe we can do it next year. But it's, it's getting to the point where it's kind of make or break for that salt burn.
Okay.
And Kyle, just for clarification, I just passed, a, a new building with the newer design is just physically unattainable right now because of the pad. Is that what the problem?
Loan would be, would be more, more money than this, than just re-roofing the salt burn. I mean, you're, you're, because they're going to have to pour three feet of concrete.
Yeah.
However big you want to make the structure, that's going to be pretty costly.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. This was my department ages ago when we first were trying to defer it and we had some issues. I, I, I think we're finally at the point where we have to do it now.
Excuse me, gentlemen. Mr. Hardy, your camp, your picture is frozen. Still there?
It is.
Yeah, I heard him, but he's frozen.
Your video is frozen, but we can hear you. As long as you can continue to hear the proceedings.
Okay, as long as you can hear me.
Okay, you'll, but obviously you'll have to speak up because we can't read lips.
Yeah, I can hear just
Okay, but you are still there. Ed?
Okay, can you hear me?
I guess, yeah.
I'm still here.
Alright, okay.
You can hear me. Okay.
Right.
Okay. Kyle and I discussed it. Okay, Kyle and I discussed this and I actually went and looked at the shingles themselves and we had a priority list. And I think Kyle agrees. We, we agreed this was a number one priority, that we're really taking a chance if we keep kicking this down the road.
Okay, alright, we'll leave it in.
Now everybody's frozen for me.
Well, and just to reiterate, you know, Kyle, when we first started looking at this, Steve, like eight years ago. And we keep on kicking the canned out street, hoping it's going to get cheaper or something will happen or and nothing's happened. It's just unfortunately that this is what we have to spend to replace it.
Alright, then we will leave that in the five-year cap for the time being. And that takes us on to streets and highways. Under streets and highways for fiscal year 20, we've got 300,000 for the Sleepy Hollow roads resurfacing. That can actually be moved to fiscal year 22, since the letting is not going to be down until June, right, Jeff? Okay, Jeff's, can anybody hear me?
I was muted. Yeah, so depending on where you're planning on taking that money was, were you still planning on taking some of that from MFT?
Correct.
Yeah, because as part of the agreement, as at least with IDOT, is you'll actually have to have those funds readily available for whenever payment actually becomes. So just to give you an idea as far as when you might need those funds is June is the letting date and depending on when construction starts is, it'll be a month, June, July. You might have a construction period of maybe between August, end of August-ish, and then typically as payment is directly after that. So you might want to keep
We could move that from fiscal year, this fiscal year to the next fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so let's move that 300,000 over to fiscal year 22. The street signs, we need to leave at 11:05. The street program this year, we allocated 135 of the surplus that stays. Vehicles, we've got a replacement of a Ford F-450 for $100,000. Ed, Kyle?
Is that here?
We lost Ed.
Kyle and I talked.
Okay. Ed?
Ed, are you there?
I've got nothing from Ed.
Okay, here.
There we go.
Yeah, I'm having a little bit of electronic. I'm losing voice, voiceovers. But Kyle and I talked about this. Correct me if my notes are wrong here, Kyle. The question's from the trustees, is it better to keep repairing the truck? I think Kyle estimate, estimated that it would take approximately 15,000 a year to keep this truck running.
Well, here's, here's the deal. So for the, for the the 2002 F-450, it's 19 years old since we're in model year 2021. It needs a new oil pan. Not sure when that's going to be, but they're, basically the drain plug on it, it's rusted all around it. So it's a matter of time. It's like a ticking bomb. I got an estimate, estimate for that. That's four grand. If we keep the truck, it's going to need new tires too. Those tires are the original tires. They're 20 years old. That's, I estimated that two grand because they're dualies. And then a new light bar. The light bar that's on it is non-replaceable. It's the old police strobe light where the motor spin around and so to start, to keep the truck up and running just for this year, it's $9,000. And it's a 19-year-old truck. So I mean, that's up to, that's up to you guys for what's versus a good investment and a bad investment.
Well, and the question I asked, I asked Kyle the other day, I just want, I'll let you reiterate, Kyle, if that, if the truck breaks, if the oil pan starts leaking, you have to take it to Ford and it snows out, the streets just don't get plowed, right? For how long it takes?
Well, it would stretch our fleet pretty thin, but you know, we'd make do with what we have.
But it would take longer to plow and some of the courts and some of the other ways.
Makes everything harder, yeah.
It sounds to me we might be able to just put this thing to bed and get rid of it and start again. I mean, I, I hate to spend the money, don't get me wrong, but if we're going to spend that much money on a 19-year-old truck, it becomes a little bit, you know, counterproductive, in my opinion.
Right. I think the discussion last week is with like $20,000 to, it almost seemed like refurbish it. You know, if we're going to put $20,000 into it and we knew we had a good truck for four or five years, but it just sounds like we're just putting Band-Aids on it as things break.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we have to look at when we spend money on, you know, basically infrastructure or things that we need to run a village, you know, salt dome roof, the truck. I believe that we would just replace the truck because it impacts too many other things if it goes down. I know it's expensive, but the, the chance of something being affected by the truck not working could be that much more expensive.
I would agree with that.
That was my opinion. I was just waiting to hear from the rest of the board after speaking with Kyle.
Okay, you want to leave the truck in there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Census says leave the truck in there. Alright, uh equipment. We've got the North Star pressure washer, the salt spreaders, and the snowplows.
You can scratch the pressure washer. But to answer some questions about the pressure washer, it's not just your home and garden pressure washer. It was a heated pressure washer. It takes diesel fuel. It's got a burner on it. It would be used for commercial applications, obviously, to wash grease and all that stuff off the trucks. We had one in the past. It broke two years ago. Uh, we had one in the past, it broke two years ago. I do have a pressure washer, it's a Cub Cadet, but you know, I get times are tough, so we can scratch the North Star pressure washer. It's not, not essential.
Wait, Kyle, just real quick, in, uh, the chief, I, do we still have somebody involved in the less so programs? I know we, we'd had just what you're asking for in less so program and then we sold it. Would it be possible to try and see if we could get one of those again through less so? Is that a possibility or do we not have that?
I'd like to because I could use another, um, Polaris Ranger.
Yeah.
But that, that's up to chief. I don't know, I don't know anything about that program.
I don't either. I just see him smiling, so I don't know if he's.
Well, I'm just going to meet my son. We, we can take a look at it. I do have somebody who's a representative that, that does work uh, with the program and look into it and see if we can acquire one. But it would take some time.
Okay.
I think we're willing to wait, but you're right, that, that those two cup, the, I'm sorry, like with the
Ranger.
All-wheel-drive vehicles, yeah, that we're using, those, I mean, for the Fourth of July and for cutting the courts and for everything else, those have been the best investment we had for the parts we put into them, so.
As they got more than four bolts on the wheels.
Yeah. I need one.
I love the toy with four bolts on the wheel.
Can, uh, can we go back to that, uh, to that MFT or to the City Hollow Road funding? Yeah, um, I was just sorry during, while y'all were talking, I looked at the application. And originally we had said, uh, for construction and engineering phase three, as far as part of the approval for this middle is we said fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two, which is basically May first, twenty twenty-one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So if you put it to what years or what period, time period would be fiscal year twenty twenty-two for the village?
May one, uh, see, this is twenty, yeah. It's May one, twenty-one to April thirtieth, twenty-two.
Okay, so that's fiscal year twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Okay, so then, yeah.
We're still within, right?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, uh.
Uh, Mr. President, you said something about snow plows and salt spreaders as part of.
Uh, nobody objected to those, Kyle, so I thought they were staying.
Well, I, what, how much is in there for it?
Uh, four K for salt spreaders and sixty-five hundred for plows.
I think you try cut the plow in half. I just got a brand-new plow. We, we might actually even be able to take that down to zero. I mean, it would. I hate to do that just in case if there's a problem, but I get that, got a brand-new plow. Uh, the other international is six years old. Uh, that's up to the board on that one.
Is this sixty-five hundred just for the blades or is this for an entire plow?
Entire plow.
Oh, okay.
Because the blades come out of my uh, operating maintenance supply.
Okay.
Yeah.
We leave it in there just in case and don't replace it unless it's critical, just so. I mean, is that another one of those items, Kyle, where hoses or it breaks or otherwise you have to replace it or is that something you repair?
Uh, hoses, all, if, if, if it depends, if the entire plow, the framing, it would be for basically the framing of the plow. Hoses and stuff, that's operating maintenance supply fund uh, activities. Um, and that's like hoses are minimal purchase, it's not, not the end of the world. It'd be for the actual, like the, for the big trucks, the yellow or the orange part.
Right. How often do they break?
The two thousand six I have has a little hole started in it just from salt and stuff like that. I mean, you really have to beat them to break them.
Yeah. Well, you want to leave the sixty-five, you want to move it over to fiscal year twenty twenty-two?
All right, I'm good.
What was that, Ed?
I mean, if we, oh, if we move it to fiscal twenty twenty-two, then if, if something catastrophic happens, we can always modify the budget mid-season or replace it, right? I mean, it's not the end, it's not like we're going to spend the money on something else.
Okay. I will move those over one year. I will make these modifications and give them out to the finance guy tomorrow morning and I will see what can go from there.
Mr., Mr. President?
Yes.
Just going back to Parks and Rec, I still see, and maybe I missed something, Saddle Club Playground Equipment is still in there for fiscal twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
I believe we had a discussion that we agree that we, we were not going to spend the money to replace any time in the future. Should we just remove that from any future consideration? Especially knowing that Sabatino, the park district is going to be coming to us in the next few years to give our contribution with the agreement to replace that.
Uh, is that the desire of the board? Should we just take that a hundred and five out for fiscal year twenty twenty-two?
I think we should. I would agree with Joe.
Yes, I, I would agree also.
I do too. I think that. May also.
And I don't know what our contribution is for the park district, but I do know that they are looking at replacing it in the next couple of years that it's reached the end of its service life. So we may want to put something in the future for Sabatino Park.
Okay. What do you want to put in there?
I, I don't, what did we spend last time, Steve? You remember? Because for the other board members who may not know, I believe the agreement with it is that we paid for, they pay for design and maintenance.
November two thousand. We haven't spent in Sabatino Park since, uh, two thousand.
Do you remember what it was?
No.
I want to say it was like thirty-six or forty at the time. Because they, they cover installation and design and maintenance, right, Kyle?
Yeah.
Basically, yeah. Should we put fifty in for next, for that year for?
I would think fifty.
Sabatino next year or year after?
Twenty, next year. Twenty-two, I think, is what they're thinking about, twenty-two or twenty-three, I think, depends what their budget is too.
You want fifty thousand?
Just a guess, but that seems to be about right because we're looking at a hundred and five to do all of Saddle Club and it would basically be about half, right, Kyle?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it depends on what size playground they go with, but yeah, that fifty thousand is a good number.
And the, the equipment in Sabatino right now is still in good shape or acceptable shape. So fifty should be a good number.
Yeah.
That's great. All right, we put fifty down there for that.
Uh, while we're there, sorry to delay, the drinking fountain. Did we decide to leave that there?
Yes, we did.
Yes.
We did, okay.
And just for clarification, that I believe, and Anthony, correct me if I'm wrong, because you would be the most knowledgeable on this, the service club needs water down there to serve any food during Fourth of July, right?
Yes, that's correct. So we need the water supply, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and Kyle, would you give an update on the condition of that drinking fountain and what we talked about?
In rush, it's in rough shape. Uh, it's probably got a couple of years left. Uh, I'm assuming that was put in in two thousand with the rest of the, when the playground was put in. I'm not sure, it's, it's getting pretty rotten with rust and everything like that.
It, it was done when I was water trustee the first time. So Steve, that was when you were still a trustee. So that was like, what, ninety-nine, maybe ninety-eight?
Ninety-nine, two thousand.
Yeah, we, we actually put that in.
Note here.
Um, Kyle, we put that in when we were working on the, uh, the pigging of the, the water mains and trying to figure out the rust problem. We cut out a section of pipe, we're like, we've cut out a section of pipe, we might as well do something useful with that money, so we are putting the, uh, the drinking fountain.
Yeah, I'd say it's got probably one to two years left on it.
Yeah.
Okay. We will leave that on the five-year cap. Any other questions or comments on the five-year cap? If not, we have a motion to approve the five-year cap as amended.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Nemec, seconded by Deatley. Any further comments, questions or discussion? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Deatley.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitt.
Aye.
Pirino.
Aye.
Four affirmatives and no negatives, the motion still passes. Okay, five-year cap is done, uh, condition of public works and salt dome. I think we've talked about that along with five-year cap. Uh, the five-year cap wraps up the uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget review. Now all we need is a motion to approve as presented.
So move, Harney.
Second, Pirino.
Moved by Harney, seconded by Pirino to approve the presented fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget and five-year cap. Any further comments, questions or discussion? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Deatley.
Aye.
Mr. Nimmitt.
Aye.
Mr. Pirino.
Aye.
Four affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion still passes. We've got a budget. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes.
Hey, Steve, um, I have a note here, if we've lost the video, I was given a note that the host has discontinued it and to have him check that.
I can turn it back on, but it, it, it's a trade-off for his audio.
Oh, okay.
Okay, did you hear that, Ed?
Yes, okay.
Give you your picture, but we're going to cut your voice. Give you your voice and cut your picture.
Okay, all right. Should we vote on that?
Yeah. Okay, well.
Mr. President, this is, uh, Mark Schuster. I, uh, I do need to be excused for about ten minutes. I'd be happy to come back just as soon as I can. Um, sorry for, uh, any inconvenience. There are a couple of items yet on the agenda that I may have some input. Uh, but I'll, I'll be back shortly. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schuster. We'll see you shortly. Okay, uh, got Ed still here?
Yes.
Okay. All right, water and sewer, Joe?
Uh, I think we talked about all my issues. Only I would say is we do have another broken valve that Kyle's going to be working on this weekend on part of that, uh, fifty-year-old water main, right? Kyle, is that one of the old valves that broke?
That's the old, one of the old valves, yeah.
Yeah, that's the other, yeah.
But, uh, pretty happy with our efficiency report this month, this past month, even with two main breaks. And the firemen have been out testing hydrants as well. Um, Joe, I've been talking with Joe too. We have some pressure issues on the east side. Uh, not sure if there's been a valve that has been turned off and not turned all the way back on. Or if it's the pressure reducing valves on Locust and Windmore, but there's definitely pressure issues on the east side.
High, low pressure?
Low.
Low pressure? Did you saw in reducing valves over there in the last couple of years?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, I've been talking with Kyle and Jeff about that, so they're going to get together and look at the pressure reducing valves, look at the valves and see what issues we have. But the fire department also brought the issue to Kyle. I know a couple of residents have too, right, Kyle?
Yes. Uh, based, based on what the fire department has seen with, uh, opening, closing fire hydrants, there's somewhere up on Windmore before the pressure reducing valve would even take effect, uh, there's, there's issues up there. Um, so I'm assuming that a valve was shut off at some point during a main break or something over time. I, I'm not sure. Uh, it's just a matter of locating, isolating, seeing if that's the case. Because everything that would be below that, the pressure reducing valve would affect, um, to a certain degree. The concern I have is that there's a couple of fire hydrant, fire hydrants on Windmore uh, before actually above higher elevation than when, where Glen Oak is that have zero to twenty PSI pressure coming from, for water. So it's kind of a concern.
Yes, okay. Keep us informed. Okay. Anything else, Joe?
No, that's it. And maybe Kyle would point out that the, the expectation of the new water meters of being more efficient seems to actually come to fruition. Their estimate of what, what they say, Kyle, that we could probably get ten percent more if we replaced all the meters. Seems to be pretty close, if not better.
Yeah, base, I mean, really, we had nine, ninety-eight percent water efficiency last month with two main breaks and however much water the fire department uses when they open and close valves, so I'm pretty happy with.
Fantastic.
Okay.
That's all I have, or we have, I should say. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Kyle. Uh, police and public safety, Steve?
Uh, just want to take a moment and thank the police force, um, out during Halloween. Um, it was great to see them interact in the community. The officers were talking to the kids and the parents out walking around and, uh, just love the community involvement and I really appreciate that, chief, and just want to pass that along.
Thank you. The officers had a good time doing it.
Do you have anything to add, chief?
I do not, but we'll have something for the next time.
All right. That's all, Steve.
All right, thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Uh, building and environment, uh, Tom Merkel is his, I've got nothing from him, he's not here this evening. So building and zoning, Anthony.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay, next item is the review of the miscellaneous village fees.
So this is actually, we need Mark for, I think, because, let me just say, well, I know, I, I started this whole thing.
You started it.
Kyle, Kyle added, I shouldn't say, Kyle, Wendy and I were, had some discussions and we added a couple of fees that we were not charging for, one of them being the turn on, shut off, which we approved uh, during the summer, uh, actually even before that, I think. Um, and then in the conversation, Mr. Schuster, he said that there's actually a table of fees that we have that the village board should review and approve once a year, which we had not done in several years. So he went through that and talked to Wendy and I believe the copy, the one in here, it says Village of Sleepy Hollow Fee Scheduled Draft dated ten, five, twenty twenty. The numbers that are penciled in and the check marks are numbers that Wendy went and said are our current fees. I will defer to the chief on any of the AWT numbers to make sure they are correct. And I believe, once we determine these are the fees, Mark puts them on our table and then we approve that, which should normally be done during the budgeting process. So this should not be a change of any fees, this should just be basically clarifying what our current fees are in one place.
Okay.
So I asked the, so, so as far as I know, unless anybody sees anything, we'll give this to Mark to write up for approval at the next meeting and I'll defer to the chief on the AWTs to make sure that they are all correct.
They do appear to be correct.
So I guess the direction we need to give the village attorney is to put this in whatever format they need to be for official approval at the next meeting. And then in the future, make sure this is part of the finance committee and budget process in the spring.
Is that going to be for the eleven sixteen or is that going to be the first one in, in December? No, this will be eleven sixteen. Okay, so we're looking at the one with the pencil, uh, marks on it, Joe?
The, the copy that was given to me, which I think is one of the packets, so it has like, so we start the vehicle, vehicles, passenger SUV. It is penciled in with a check mark. I believe that those are all Wendy's check marks and penciled in marks. So this should be, and I see the shut off fee in there, the bulk water fee, all the other things that we had changed, data log fee are all in there, so. The only other thing I could think of that, that we may need to look at is the Village of Sleepy Hollow fee for transition fees. But I don't think we're going to have any annexation in the near future anyway, are we? So, and the liquor licenses are correct, Steve?
They appear to be.
So, so we said to give this.
What we got to change is the return check fee.
Is that? Uh, the dog and animal and cat and passenger vehicles, I think, are also.
These have all been changed by ordinance.
All of them have been changed by ordinance as far as I know.
Right.
So it's just a matter of putting this on the table that, that we adopt every year.
Okay.
In a form that's other than a type sheet with penciled in marks on it. Thank you, Steve.
Okay. All right.
So am I correct, Steve, that when we give this to Mark and Mark writes it up in the table that we adopt every year?
Well, I'm not sure we ever had a table of all of them that we adopted every year. We just went by individual ones.
Uh, let's ask Mark when he comes back. See, I thought he told me that there was a table that we adopt every year. Or that we approve or that at least is. Let's ask Mark when he comes back with what we do that these are.
Best year that we've been talking about.
Yeah, he initially, the first thing he forwarded me was a, was from 2017, I believe, was a table that. Let's just ask Mark for clarification, what we need to do with this now, because he was the one that, this was really the one, his issue.
Okay. Alright, the next item under Old Business is 874 Windmore Court Cost Sharing. I believe Mr. Schuster would also like to be available for that one. Oh, so we'll hold a couple of minutes for Mr. Schuster's return. And the next one, we go into New Business Development of a referendum question. Once again, I'm gonna hold for Mr. Schuster's attendance on that one also. The other one, though, I've got is a note that could basically be brought up under Old Business. Miss Mona Hour called and left a message wanting us to reconsider her offer on a speed sign, or a speed radar sign, to be purchased by the village and installed on Sleepy Hollow Road just south of Route 72. I was, my understanding that pretty much the consensus was that the board was not interested in pursuing such a sign at this time. First, it was rather considered a little hypocritical that we want Sleepy Hollow Road to be a quiet little country road and we were going to be sticking a flashing sign in the middle of this pleasure driveway. But that's my interpretation of it. What's the rest of you think about it?
I, I, I've been doing a lot of driving lately and I've seen a lot of the villages, especially north of us, have rather small signs that just have speed that are mounted to poles that appear to be solar-powered. I have no idea how much they are, but I will say that they seem to be just effective in some ways, because if I'm following somebody and they appear to be going fast, I see brake lights going on. If you, if you walk around Graffman Park in West Dundee, you will see, everybody sees that sign light up there that they know they're speeding, they slow down. If Mona is willing to donate such a sign to the village, I have no objections installing it based on the engineers and the chief's recommendations as far as location, but they're rather unobtrusive. There's some, North Barrington uses them quite a bit, Lake Barrington uses them quite a bit. They're about the same size as a speed sign. They're rather obtrusive. So if she would like to donate something like that to the village, I have no objection to it being installed.
I would agree with Joe. I've same saying. I've seen people hit, see those signs and hit the brakes, so, you know, maybe the chief has some input on if how effective they actually are. I'm not sure. But, you know, if anything we can do to tour and slow people down a little bit, I think it's a good thing. And like you said, like Joe said, they're not, they don't seem to be of a huge size, so that's the good thing. It probably could be mounted in an area. If it's gonna be solar, it can only be mounted in a certain area to, to get enough light down Sleepy Hollow Road, but that's my thoughts.
I would concur with both, Steve. Yeah, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Finish, finish your thought, sir.
No, I, I was done. I was just agreeing with trustee Diatley and Nemec.
Well, one of the things I had spoken with an intermediary from this hour, one of the things I would like to see, if we're gonna donate money to such a project, I'd like to have it be a little bit more mobile and user-friendly throughout the entire village and not just for that one location. I think that would benefit all the citizens and not just the ones who traverse on one road.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it seems to be a little confusion. I was under the impression this was a fairly large sign that had yellow flashing lights around the outside edges of it and flashed a, a, a light that we were being, that was being proposed for this location and not the small, little obscure radars that Joe and Steve have been talking about. So.
Right, that is correct. It would be contrary, it would be pleasure drive ordinance.
So if it's. You guys would be interested in.
Mr. President, Ted?
Ed? Ed?
Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yes, you're coming and gone. What is?
I believe Ms. Hours wants this, I believe Ms. Hour. I believe Ms. Hours wants to revisit, have us revisit her offer of donating $1,500 towards the signs. I believe the signs are much more expensive than that.
I just looked and the first one I saw hit was $2,300 and that's just a small, you know, one mounted on a, so yes, a, a, as I said, I, I would, I don't object to her donating the sign. I don't know that I would want to come up with matching funds from the village this time. I would agree with that.
Okay, so you're more interested in if the sign is donated as opposed to sharing the purchase price of it?
Correct. Yes, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okie dokie.
Do you want me to get a quote from my sign supplier? I'm sure they sell.
Let me have a conversation with Ms. Hour first.
Okay.
See what, because she had $1,500. If Joe's seeing things that are over 2K already, I'll just let her know that if she wants to come up with the entire cost of the sign and it can be a sign that can be shared throughout the village and not stationaryly placed in one spot, then we'll see where she would like to go.
Chief, can those things be moved around at all? Is it a difficult thing to mount in a post?
I think with her original proposal, it would be, you would have to mount it to something. There's a very few locations where you can. Obviously, as you know, there's a lot of trees and brush and there might be one pole that's near the bridge where she was proposing. But one of the initial discussions is that we would need something on wheels, something a little bit more mobile. As I said, that would could be used throughout the entire village. That was my hope.
And if she wants to donate that, I, I fully support that, too.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Schuster has not returned in a moment. We still have got a couple of items to consider with his attendance. So if, why don't we take a five-minute recess here?
Hold on, he's here.
Oh, hold on, Mr. Schuster's back.
In the waiting room.
Mark, are you there? I see a red dot to the left.
He's on mute.
He's on mute. Okay.
Now he's off mute.
Mark?
Alright, can I be heard? I'm sorry, I have no video, but I'm, I'm here and can speak and hear.
Alright, well, we can hear you. So we'll just, okay, we've got a couple of items that we moved over in your absence, Mark. One of them was a review of the miscellaneous village fees. We seem to have come to a consensus that we've got a good sheet of fees here that we can go forward with from this point on. The question was, do we send them to you to be placed into some tablet form, or do we just simply type up the clean sheet and move forward?
Either way, obviously, I've started it, so I could easily modify it based on any modifications that are proposed. Or have someone at the village take care of it.
Alright, well, and then we'll take care of it. We've got all the numbers and whatnot and we'll just establish this as the agreed-upon fees as of 11/2.
Right, and, and then you should look at them in the budget process for next year and every year, just check them out.
Hey, Mark, initially, did you send me, was it a Microsoft table or an Excel document that had all those in that was nice and clean?
I, if I sent you something, it's an Excel.
There's an Excel document out there, I think, Steve, that maybe Mark could forward to you or to whoever's gonna do it.
Yeah, I could, I could do that.
Okay.
Just a little cleaner looking.
Alright, well, that'll take care of the miscellaneous village fees. We're done with that. The next item, Mike or Mark, under Old Business is 874 Windmore, the cost-sharing request by Mr. Copaz on the swale and the culvert at his location. He was here the last couple of meetings. He's back. We have supplied two estimates that he has gotten for the replacement and removal and replacement of the culverts in his driveway.
Just a moment. Two people trying to talk to me at once. No, I'm in, I'm in another meeting. I'll have to reschedule with you. Alright, thank you. Alright, sorry for that. The, the one question about this was whether there might be an insurance claim to be made for the village. I, my answer, I guess, is that perhaps. It's not easy to tell. The, there, there is immunities, or there are immunities that are available to the village and those may well apply. It's a unique set of circumstances because it goes back several years, involves an allegation that there were multiple events. And, and, and I guess the upshot is that those may have contributed to the defective conditions on the property now. So it, it's not clear. I, I couldn't tell you yes or no. One possible solution is to make the claim and let the insurance company decide. You know, making, giving prompt notice to your insurance company is one of the conditions of your policy. So you have to consider that. And I guess the other is whether you want to make an insurance claim and have that added to the village's experience when renewal time comes. So. Guess we're looking for some direction from the board as to whether or not to take that step or to otherwise continue some investigation and review of the circumstances with the homeowner and the village engineer.
Your preference?
I, I guess my, my question would be, when Mr. Schuster says you need a timely submission of this, the documentation that's out there doesn't show that it was very recent, so that might be a negative right off the bat. Would that be correct?
It, it might be. I mean, Mr. Copaz has just in the last 30, 45 days brought this up to the village board. Maybe he's done it before, I don't know, but you know, on that basis, you give a notice to the insurer that somebody has brought up a situation claiming that the village is liable or partly liable for the circumstances.
Well, I think, you know, I, I know that there was another figure that Jeff Steele mentioned about the swale and, you know, the substantial amount of money. When you look at the documentation that Mr. Copaz presented here with the estimate from, from Sandman, if, if, if that is all the investment that is there and he's asking for a cost sharing, then we just would have to determine how much money the village could potentially approve towards this, and maybe it's not a 50%, but maybe it's some monies. But the other piece of it was the whole swale work, which I think needs to be treated separately.
Right. I agree with you 100% is that, that the swale work is definitely our responsibility and we should, you know, do that and we budget some money, but as far as the culvert goes, I mean, I, just going from the letters and the information from our two experts knowledgeable that we're dealing with a 35-plus-year-old culvert whose life expectancy is 35 to 50 years and it had holes in it and the condition of the rest of the driveway. I mean, it, it seems like, even if we go to the insurance company, we're asking it's damage on something that was past its service life anywhere at the end of it. You know, it would be another situation if it was a brand-new culvert driveway, put it away, had a water main leaking and washed away. That would be a whole different matter, so, in my opinion.
I, I agree with that summary.
Yeah. Jeff and Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong. If I remember from our past meetings on this, we haven't, from, if I remember, we haven't had a water main break in that area and I think it was over two years. Is that correct? Am I remembering that correctly?
Uh, up and, yeah, I mean, this year we had two or three, but prior to that, there wasn't one for quite some time. I don't remember the last one we had before, prior to this year. Yeah, and Jeff, if I remember correctly, you were saying too that the, the culvert itself was rotted or rusted out and gone away and that allowed the water to get underneath it and cause more erosion. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
So the board's action, what do we, what do we want to do, gentlemen?
Well, can we, do we, Kyle, can you either do the work yourself or have Pons do the work to bring the swale up into a acceptable condition and put some riffraff in there, rip, riffraff, riprap or shotrock in there to slow down the velocity of the water going through those culverts? With our budget and? Uh, I can. That's, where do you want to pull the money from? That's, the last, my question is because they would not promise the people behind Willow and Rainbow that that was what the swale money or drainage money was going for this year, correct? Yes. And I am the one, the lady on Locust and Willow. That's right. I forgot, we forgot about her, so. Jeff, to you. We have a big pile of shotrock. If we dump that in the swale for now, would that serve the purpose until we were able to budget and repair, repair the swale?
Yeah, I mean, basically, the whole idea is, is that currently that swale is, you'll, obviously, a lot of you have probably driven, driven by it and taken a look at it, is that there's ruts basically throughout that whole thing. Basically, with the way the amount of water that's coming from the top of the hill is, it just starts coming down that hill faster and faster and faster. And then obviously, once it starts washing away in one location is it'll keep on washing away. So ideally is you'd want to put some riprap at the top of the hill, just enough to slow it down and basically cause some kind of slowing mechanism, be the word you guys understand. And then also you could throw some of that also in front of the culverts themselves just to help with the erosion around the side of the culverts.
Kyle, is that something that you could do with the? Yeah. But, yeah, we can dump riprap in there. And hope for the best. I mean, if we have a massive flooding, raining events, it's gonna wash it, but yeah. It'd already wash away what's there right now if we didn't do it too, so. I could put the riprap down and, and go from there. I mean, we did promise, right, we promised the person on Locust, we promised the person on Hillcrest. We, we, we just need to, you know, either fund it or prioritize and.
Luckily, on, like, as Kyle said, is, is that's a very temporary solution as far as just throwing some riprap in there is, ideally is you'd want to excavate something down into there and actually put some erosion blanket and then put the stone on top of that, but obviously, it's a short-term solution in order to help it, but any large, massive rain events is going to wash that away. Luckily, on that swale is, we had actually redone that maybe five, six years ago. I forget what it was. So basically, the shape of the swale is still there, so a lot of the maintenance on that swale is just kind Uh, so basically the shape of the swale is still there. So a lot of the maintenance on that swale is just kind of cleaning up any uh, stone and any of that silt that's actually formed down at the bottom of the swale. So luckily is it's not a small fix, but it could have been worse. But yeah, as far as it'd be throwing in that shot rock or any of the riprap, it'd be a very temporary solution.
And move that to phase three on our, our master board there?
I think, uh, I think our, we're gonna have to reconsider our phases here, Joe. Uh, we got twenty-five grand to go for drainage out of the five-year cap moving forward.
Okay.
I can talk to Kyle is just because obviously over the years is we've kind of built up a list and I have a cost on all those. So I can talk to Kyle as far as uh, getting a new phase list created with him.
Yeah, we, yeah, going forward. What about Mr. Copaz in the, this evening?
I don't know if we need to make a motion or otherwise, but uh, I, I think that if we can, Kyle says he can effectively do some, some things on that swale to control the speed, at least temporarily with in-house cost and I, I think that that's all I'm willing to commit to at this point with our budget situations and knowing the conditions or anything.
Well, but don't we also have to address the culvert issue from his original proposal?
As I said, it, it, it seems like that culvert had reached its service life and I, I don't know that it's our responsibility. And once again, Mark's here. Do we not, uh, we have a bunch of ordinances covering that now. I, I'm not sure that that we caused the excess damage. I mean, whether it's Jeff, I'm free on this. I mean, it was, it was the, the bottom rusted out is what caused the damage. At, at least that's what I'm hearing. Correct if I'm wrong.
Yeah, it is. When you look at the bottom of that culvert is there's uh, locations where it's actually rusted out. And basically what happens is, is as water starts flowing through that is it's going to, if there's holes in the bottom is it's going to start staking that stone and transporting it further down the hill. And then obviously is the pavement above is actually held up by that stone. So then the pavement starts to collapse itself because there's no base underneath it.
Okay. Mr. Copaz, we do the swales. You do the culverts?
Uh, what are you talking about doing the culverts, replacing the pipes?
Right.
If I, 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 I originally stated that I would pay for the replacement of the pipes. Um, and that I felt that the village should be responsible for completing the rest, including the blacktop over those pipes. Okay. Because of the fact that I, I feel that it was a, a negligent uh, act over all these years that this has been taking place and nothing has been done to correct uh, the, the reoccurring problem that this property has had over the last couple decades. And uh, that has added to any rotting out of that pipe or washing away of the gravel. Uh, you might say so. I would be willing to pay for the pipes themselves. Uh, because of the fact that yes, they would need to be replaced sometime and I would need to replace those. But um, I, I feel the village should take care of the swales and uh, uh, putting in the pipes and the blacktop right over the swales, over the pipes. I'm sorry.
I would be for replacing the, doing the swell work, but I personally feel that um, the culverts being rusted out and causing more erosion um, is not totally the village's fault and I would not feel comfortable taking on that cost. If you were going to replace those pipes, you would be repaving that along with it anyway. So I feel that should be your cost.
Uh, and I would agree with Steve and I think well put.
And I, I feel that it was a negligent uh, negligence based on this occurring time after time after time. And now it's, it's gone beyond any correction. But we're still talking about doing a temporary fix on this again. And then secondly, we're talking about possibly replacing the water mains uh, on this uh, 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 windboard drive, which runs directly underneath this whale and my pipes. And I also feel that the, the uh, water main breaks have been washing away at the, at that swale over a period of time. Um, before it was even visible. It was following that pipe down possibly because the ground in that swale sunk to the tune of about three feet, two to three feet in front of my, uh, of my culvert pipes. But nothing's, nothing's ever been done to slow down this water or replace the water mains or whatever, um, you know, needs to be done there to alleviate the problem rather than patch the problem up, which is what I, what I feel has, has really contributed to this problem. Um, the patching of the, of the water mains time after time and recurring. Um, yeah, I, I can understand that the village needs to patch those rather than replace them, but I, I did speak to the village at one time in the past, many years ago about, uh, is the water main going to be taken care of in this area? And uh, I, I, I didn't get a, a positive response that it was going to be. But now that this is gone and then we're talking about replacing the water mains, the water, the water mains run right underneath this. So with the village replacing the water mains, you would be digging up my culvert pipes and uh, that whole culvert area to get to the water mains. And repaving them. So I feel that by me replacing the pipes, uh, which would be a responsibility of mine, would, I, I would be okay with that. But as far as replacing the blacktop, et cetera, in there, that, that, uh, that's part of the village's responsibility. And, and maybe it shouldn't even, it, it shouldn't even happen right now until you replace the water mains because then it's just going to be done, being done again. So, you know, if the water main didn't run right beneath this culvert and my culvert pipes, uh, it would be a different story. If it were, if the water mains, mains ran, uh, ran on the other side of the street, for example, that'd be a whole different story.
Actually, I think it's what Mr. Steele said, that, that, that the part of the new plans, we probably could not run the water mains as a current one, is they would be in a different location. So it's, it's likely they might be on their side of the road. So.
So, you know, that's with the path, you know, the patching of water means all this time over there and, and uh, you know, possibly the leak that, that took place on the water main right above me there. Uh, leaking on a continual basis and wearing away at, at right before the culvert pipe to down to two to three feet deep at that point. And, and it has been wet in there and until this, this pipe broke now just up the hill from me. Oh, I won't know fifty feet, maybe, maybe not that much. Um, and then since that water main had sprung a leak and it was fixed, well, now that two foot deep trench that was dug by water or erosion is not getting wet any longer, whereas in the past it was. So I feel that there was, there was some negligence there to correct the problem all along the way.
My suggestion would be that we uh, have uh, the engineer and the public works director, as we discussed in the beginning of this segment, uh, do some uh, riprap repair work in that area and that we submit the rest of this to the insurance company. Because at this point, the village is not, does not have the finances to make this thing correct.
Gentlemen?
I could be in agreement with that, Anthony.
Joe? Joe?
Joe, you're mute.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I said at least three or four things there. Um, I, I don't know that I approve, sunny, it's the insurance company on a pretty forever year old pipe that's past its service life. And it seems like last time we spent an enormous amount of money on lawyer's fees, talking back and forth with the insurance company. So. Are we getting to the point of potential litigation that we need to take it into executive session at the next meeting?
Not yet.
Okay.
Ed?
I would, I would have to say it is in the interest of the village to get this corrected. However, the blame being caused, uh, being cast here, it's not all in the village.
We lost Chad. Ed, we've lost audio.
And Mr. President, I'm having some technical. Yeah. Uh, Mr. President, it's Ed. I'm having some electronic problems here. I'm getting very internet discussion. Just to let you know.
Okay, we're getting them. We're getting the same from you. You're hitting miss.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Ed?
Yeah.
John's gonna send you a phone number to dial in on and see if that helps.
Okay.
Get out?
Okay.
All right. Uh, okay. Joe's not in favor of it. Steve and Anthony are somewhat considering the idea of giving it to the insurance company. We'll see if Ed can get us, uh, get in contact with us here in a couple of seconds.
But uh, I'd also like to point out that when Jeff came out with the president to take a look at that, we discussed the possibility of that water main leaking prior to it springing a visible leak further up the hill and the water following that pipe down right to my culvert area, which he seemed to agree with.
Okay, Ed? Still no Ed.
Uh, I got a question.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Ed, you're back. You were.
So Kyle, did you start to say something?
Yeah, I got a question as far as regarding the insurance claim. Um, would the insurance claim also cover the swales? The swale work?
There's no way of knowing until it's submitted.
Okay. So would we, would it be wise if we were to submit it with that as a part of it?
Well, it, we'll need to submit a full explanation of what has led to Mr. Copaz's claim.
Okay.
And how much of this would be routine maintenance that either, I mean, Mark, you, you wrote up some ordinances a few years ago, I believe at Mr. Seiler's request about driveways and in the right of way and culverts.
Right. Current village codes inside amendment puts the obligation of replacement of culverts on the property on, the adjacent property.
And Mr. Copaz?
I'm, I'm losing everybody. Yeah, what culverts, what number you want me to?
Well, yeah, that portion of it, it's the swale and the asphalt that uh, we've got to, to come to some kind of, of agreement on.
I'd like to also point out that the estimates that I provided are substantially less than what you're coming up with. Though I, I don't know if you both, if everyone has those uh, two estimates.
Yeah, go ahead.
The one from VA Landscaping, that's the bottom half of it.
Three, one, two.
I'm sorry?
Someone's giving us.
Oh, okay. Oh.
Okay, I will call that number, right?
Who's he talking to? I don't know.
Okay, Ed is talking to John, but I'll.
Okay. All right, the estimate from VA Landscaping, the lower portion of that uh, uh, is the only thing we're talking about. And he was willing to do everything. Uh, the swales, replacing the pipes, putting riprap at the opening of the pipes and the four flares on both sides of driveway. Everything except blacktop um, for the thirty-two to thirty-six hundred, depending on uh, the material of the pipe. The other estimate from Sandman's paving of four thousand dollars, that was to replace um, everything without the uh, um, reconstruction of the swales. So this included blacktop, it included the pipes. Uh, it included the uh, um, riprap, I believe. Um, and that was four thousand and the other company had thirty-two to thirty-six hundred, just without the, replacing the blacktop. So, I mean, I, I don't know what blacktop costs exactly, but uh, for that little strip. But let's say that uh, from what I see from VA Landscaping, if we were at, to add on some blacktopping onto that, I could see where it would probably come in around five thousand dollars. We're not, not talking about the twenty-some thousand dollar here.
The, that twenty-six thousand dollars is actually for that complete swale, basically from the top of the hill down to the bottom of it.
Okay.
Not just rounded the culvert entrances.
Okay, all right.
Hey, hey, Mark? And just, just, just for clarification, uh, Mr. Hardy just had called me on the sideline. I gave him, he couldn't, didn't have the number. So I gave the number. So he may be joining us on a phone call here again shortly. So. Uh, how would insurance claim handle damage on an item that was, I guess for the lack of better word, fully depreciated?
I have no idea. I, I mean, that's up to them.
I mean, typically just from a.
You're right. I mean, it, it they, they may, uh, they may deny the claim altogether. They may say it's not a covered item. They may, uh, they may decide that uh, there's uh, some village exposure and they should do something about it. But uh, you know, it's, it's very hard to speak for an adjuster until he's had a chance to, to uh, look at the file, look at the facts and, and uh, you know, uh, decide uh, from uh, the insurance company's business perspective, what to do.
And I think we're, we're confused. The issue of my problem and along with the correction of the swales all the way down the hill. And, and if you, I'm, I'm not, that's, that's, you know, that's, I'm, I'm looking at getting my property corrected where you have maybe a, 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 of the total cost of what I have, maybe around five thousand dollars. And I'm uh, interested in replacing the pipes themselves at my expense. So.
So, so what's, what would be the total amount of mon- money that you're looking for, Mr. Copaz?
Well, uh, I'm looking to, to put in the pipes. The, the estimates that I had here look to be five to six thousand dollars. I don't know what the pipes themselves.
I don't know what the pipes themselves.
So you're asking, you're asking the village for five or $6,000?
No, less than that because I'm putting in the pipes.
So what is the amount of money that, let's try to get this finished up. What's the amount of money that you're asking the village for?
I don't know what the cost of the pipes are broken down into just the pipes. The estimates that I have are for replacement of the whole thing and correction of the swell. So.
So we can't take any action on this unless we know the amount of money that we're gonna have to vote on. So I would recommend we table this to the next meeting. This is ridiculous.
I, I would say let's say that the pipes are $1,500, you know, based on the total estimates here that I have. So subtract the 1,500 or whatever that is and we can come up with a more exact figure on that.
Well, according, according to your handwritten note here from VA landscaping, black pipe is thirty-two, twenty-eight. Galvanized pipe is thirty-six, ten, it looks like.
Right. And that included everything.
The flares.
Uh, including the flares, except the blacktop.
So again, what's the amount of money that you're asking the village for so we can vote on it?
I would have to, I would have to get the estimate on what the pipes themselves cost unless, unless, uh, 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 the village, uh, manager or the, uh, public works director knows what that pipe costs per.
Uh, is that, is that thirty-six, ten for a square foot? Is that $36.10 on that?
No, thirty-six hundred and ten dollars. For the galvanized pipe, the four flares.
So that's, that's for, uh, a twelve inch, twenty foot long galvanized pipe? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't know if it was twelve inch or fifteen. Let me see.
It would be two because it's.
Uh, um, Sandman has, uh, fifteen inch, twenty-four, twenty-four by fifteen inch. Um, on my culverts.
Twenty-four inch?
Twenty-four, very, twenty-four length, fifteen inch.
Twenty-four feet by fifteen inches, Kyle.
Okay.
And that includes.
There's two culvert. So he's looking at either $2,000 a culvert or sixteen hun- eighteen hundred dollars a culvert or $1,600 a culvert. Well, the one most. It makes, breaks down to, I believe.
Ones without the blacktop, the others without the culvert reconstr- uh, construct.
He's looking at about $66 a square foot, right, give or take. Roughly, which is not, not far off.
Linear foot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, not square foot.
Was Mr. Harney able to, uh, trustee Harney able to join us again?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, uh, I regained the signal about five minutes ago, so I've been keeping up.
All right.
Okay.
So if it's thirty-six hundred for the culverts, Mr. Copaz, are you saying that you need $1,400 from the village to make your $5,000 budget?
No, I'm saying, I'm, I'm saying that $3,600 for the culvert pipe seems excessive on that when I can have it done by a company uh, here for $4,000. Both culverts, all the blacktop, all the gravel, all of that done, just, and, and, um, um, new culvert with the flares, grade and compact the gravel. Um, and, and all of that's being done on, on two culverts for $4,000. So I can't see where the pipes themselves cost thirty-six hundred of that.
All right, so, so Mr. Perino's question is, is, uh, we're back to that. How much are you asking the village to contribute?
Right.
We're unclear about that.
Right. But I, I, I mean, what would I, what would I suggest?
Yes, what would you suggest? Otherwise, we're gonna table the conversation. We've been talking about this for thirty minutes.
Sure, I would suggest I pay $2,000 and the rest be taken care of by the village.
So you're asking the village for $2,000?
No, I'm paying $2,000. Whatever, whatever you do to it after that, as far as correcting the swales, doing the blacktop, everything like that, that's the village. But I'm paying, I'll pay $2,000 to cover the cost of those pipes. Thousand dollars a pipe. It can't be that mu- that much for that, but I'm willing to do that.
I have to say, we have to table this until we have a number.
I second Anthony's motion.
Okay, we've got a motion to table until, well, we're not, we can't table it. We postpone it to another day. We'll put this to eleven sixteen?
What, what, what I, yes, what I would like to say is that if, if the homeowner has a total amount of money for the complete job and he's willing to pay so much, then as a board, we would know what our investment would be and we would vote on that expenditure. However, that vote comes, it comes. But right now, we just continue to talk and talk and talk. Mr. The homeowner continues to talk about the whole thing and we get nowhere. So, uh, that if we can come back at the next meeting with the total amount of the project, Mr. Copaz, and, and you're willing to pay so much, then the board will vote on the balance. Yea or nay?
Um, I, I understand. Um, would it be, would it, uh, would it be, uh, acceptable for me to come up with the cost of the pipes themselves? And you've determined what it's gonna be for the rest because you're, you're working on the swales above anyway. So if, you know, I'm willing to pay for the pipes and the flares. If I come up with a cost of the pipes and the flares, the material themselves, would that be sufficient?
Is that what you're looking for? Is just the pipes and the flares from us?
No, that's what I'm.
But I mean, you're just, you're, you're willing to offer the village is pipes and the flares.
Yeah.
We do all the maintenance, all the, the labor.
Yeah.
And the installation.
Exactly. Yeah.
And then.
And I'll be honest, I still have concerns about the village's liability on a thirty-five year old pipe on the side of a hill. I'm, I'm sorry, just for, just from the, just from the information I have received from the engineer and public works and other research I have done, so.
I think, I think the water mains and, uh, and the water running down the hill in addition to the decades-long problem there should kind of answer that problem.
Well, we did have a motion on the table that we were gonna postpone this to the next meeting, so let's vote on that.
We're having some conversation with the president at the moment, Anthony. So.
Would it be sufficient for me to come up with the cost of what I'm willing to contribute? Um, the pipes and the flares, would that be sufficient for the next meeting?
Okay, we table this. He's willing to come back with the actual cost of culvert and flares. Yeah, anything above and beyond the culverts and flares, he's expecting the village to pick up.
And, and would, would public works or the engineer come up with, with that total amount of money would be for this project?
Yeah, who's gonna estimate that cost? That's what you're asking, right, Mr. Perino?
Yeah, yes, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I'll get a, uh, I'll get a hard copy of the, what the contractor's gonna put the price at.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we know what we're asking for Mr. Copaz for the next meeting. We know what we need for the next meeting.
Now, just for clarification, is the homeowner supplying the, the the pipe and the flare ends are just contributing the amount and we are purchasing them?
He's gonna contribute an amount and we will purchase.
So Kyle will need that amount then too of what it's gonna cost to purchase the correct pipe.
Yeah, I'm gonna go through my buy, my supplier and see what it costs.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. That's what we expect to see on eleven sixteen. Okay.
Thank you.
On the motion to postpone to eleven sixteen, roll call please. Mr. Dattley?
Hi.
Mr. Harney?
Hi.
Mr. Nimmick?
Hi.
Mr. Perino?
Hi.
Four affirmatives, no negatives. We have postponed this to eleven sixteen, twenty twenty. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, under new business, uh, point number A was mine and point number B was mine. I respectfully ask that we postpone point number A to the next meeting. And point number B, we've discussed earlier because of, uh, it's a, just a letter I'm gonna write to the, uh, legend newsletter, uh, net legend per person to be published and we will review and I'd make a motion that we adjourn.
Can I make a comment on Anthony's suggestion on the first one?
We got a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? There's no second on the motion to adjourn. Joe, what did you wanna say?
No, I, I was just gonna make a suggestion to you, Anthony. On the, we've done this in the past and it seems to be very effective. I, I love the idea of the building permits and publishing a newsletter and the website. Um, the current list of Villa, I don't wanna say ordinances, the, uh, well, some of this, it's a summary of ordinances, you know, it's boats and trailers and yada, 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 things that are in there is way off, way out of date. Um, that may be, or some looking at too in the newsletter. I know we've done that in the past, but that's, that seems to be very helpful for people when they go, well, it says right here on the well, there's news center that you can have whatever that's not allowed anymore, so.
My objective, my objective in this was just simply to take, uh, in the, in the code, in Sterling codifier, uh, particular section seven dash one. And it just basically says that it's a statement. I pull it directly from the code. Just simply says that all permits need to be requ- requested and and money's applied, just as a reminder to residents, because what's happening is planning and zoning are, are, are coming up to situations where the homeowners have already started projects. They, they, you know, they're already way, way into it. And then, you know, you're basically sitting there saying, gee, the guy's done a lot of stuff already. I guess we should approve it. And then, you know, Ms. Detmer gets involved unfortunately because, you know, she doesn't have X-ray vision and you gotta figure out that he put in forty-eight inch pylons or not. So it's just a simple reminder to residents, please get your permit before you start any work. That was my objective.
Oh, that's a great idea. And maybe some examples too.
Joe, your point is, uh, is a little different, uh, that there is that like summary for new residents or something, uh, that should be looked at and rewritten.
Yeah, it's wrong. It, it goes back to.
It hasn't been changed.
As I'm ending all the ordinances, yeah, so.
Correct.
I mean, it goes back to like the seventy-five percent screening for stuff.
Well, that's really not for the newsletter. That's for the website.
Well, yeah, I thought, and maybe I misunderstood just the way it was written. I thought that, I, I thought Anthony would go through like examples like, hey, you're putting on a new garage door. You do or do not need a building permit. You need one for portacles. You need one for this or that, or, you know, and then check with Barb. So, cause I know that's always the question I get is, you know, do I need a building permit for XYZ? And I always go give Barb a call, but, you know.
Yeah, I was not gonna get that. I was not gonna get that specific. It was just gonna be a public service announcement. Don't forget your permits.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
All right.
Okay. Any other new business? Anthony wants to hold on A?
So I, correct, thank you.
I move to adjourn then.
Second, the Atlee.
What was that, Steve?
Second, the Atlee.
Who made the motion?
Joe, I did.
Nimmick, Nimmick moved the Atlee second.
Okay, Nimmick moved the Atlee second into adjourn. All in favor signify, oh, roll call.
Yeah, roll, roll call, thank you.
Just come on back down here. Mr. Dattley?
Hi.
Mr. Harney?
He's already gone.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Nimmick?
Hi.
Perino?
Hi.
Four affirmative, one, two, three, yeah, four affirmative votes, no negative votes. We are adjourned. Ed's waving goodbye.
Good evening, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Okay, thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Where did you get it?
Yes, it seems like it's, it's.
Can we bottle it? Distribute it or something?